Meeting is now called to order, being items from the public. As the record show, there was nobody with us this morning. And we do have a modified agenda. We need to pull the mobile data bid out, so motion to approve the modified agenda.
So moved.
Second. I'll be moving second. Any further discussion? On favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. As have it. Thank you. On the purchase order law, does anybody have any questions for Tracy? We're off easy this morning.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And we do have one budget, internal budget revision, and Gary, go over that for us, please.
You do, Mr. President. Prosecutor Kinzer is asking for approval to move $400 from his professional services line item, which is 223, to his postage line item, which is 218.
Very good. Change of status, we have a new hire recommendation received from Jennifer Swisher, the emergency communications director for Chelsea Lacombe. As a telecommunicator one, effective May 19th. I'm sorry, her name is Kalise Lacombe. Telecommunicator one, effective May 19, 2025, with an annual salary of $50,341. Change of status received from Tim Zia, community corrections director for Taylor Parker. Peer recovery coach for a temporary job change to community service coordinator, effective May 1, 2025, with a salary change from $43,135 to $50,676. Change of status received from Mike Lang, chief court martial for Williams Park. Deputy court martial for a step increase for years of service, effective May 1, 2025, with an annual increase from $39,017 to $40,678. Letter of resignation received from the Honorable Sheriff Rob Blair for Deputy Derek Walker, effective May 4, 2025. Letter of resignation received from Chase Weinbriner, IT manager for Caitlin Mock, GIS specialist, effective April 28, 2025. Letter of resignation received from Tim Zia, community corrections director for Susan Clark, a therapist, effective April 28, 2025. April 24th minutes, everybody was there, so we'll leave those in. We do have a request for Titan BBQ vendor at the law enforcement community day, which is this Saturday coming. And all the documents are in your packet. We have a bond release from the engineer Doug Smith. We're bond released for Arches Rock, section one and three, and that's BCP file number 2104-136, and it's tied to 2104-129, and number 2104-130, and number 90-03, and bond number AL103008. Have a bond reduction for Weber Springs Phase Three, section three, Phase Three, a final plat, BCP file number 2504-111, and that's tied to number 2503-077, number 2312-406, and number 2211-338, and that's bond number SU7111688-0000. If I have any questions for Doug. Doug, does that finish out that subdivision totally?
Sure.
Weber Springs.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So movement, President.
Been properly moved?
Second.
And second. Any further discussion? On favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. As have it. We don't have anything from the assessor this week, which is a good thing. And board meeting reports. Commissioner Boyd.
Yes, sir. I had a couple of meetings. Last week after our meeting here, I had a museum board meeting. That board is moving right along, very, very progressive board, a lot going on. They're hoping to get the RFQs out, find qualified companies to do drawings for the museum, obviously. And they're hoping to get those out and then have a selection group and have somebody selected by next month's meeting. Seems pretty tight window to me, but we'll see. They were going to contact the paper and get the AAs out and whatnot, but hopefully they can reach their goal of getting it done by next month's meeting. They're working on putting together and doing some things for upcoming website. Going to put a knowledge-based section on the museum website, which will be basically, you can go learn different things about a museum. I think I discussed that a little bit last time. They were talking about how they were going to put things out so the museum board, people could research different avenues and different things that go on in a museum, cataloging, and all different things, facets of museum, and they'll put it on the website for the public to be able to use and find those links as well. And then they voted to join the AASLH, which is like a group of museums, so they kind of help each other, bounce ideas and different things. And by joining that, it's $100 a year. It gets them a discount on artifact tracking software. So that software then will be put in place so that every item can be tracked, whether it's in storage, if it's on loan, whether it's on exhibit, where it's stored, all that kind of thing. And let's see. They did make a consensus to use the space that was offered by us on Baltimore Street for storage, and they wanted to thank the commission for us offering that space to them. It's very helpful and something that's been needed. They have a lot of people trying to give and donate and different artifacts and things, and they have had nowhere to put it, so that is a big help. And they have two gentlemen that came in and are working to establish a Friends of the Museum commission to help fundraise and do other promotions for the museum. Much of all that was going on there. Then I had CVB meeting yesterday. Hotels are still slightly down, but coming up some in occupancy. Tourism, same consensus here across the state and nationwide. Airbnbs are up for $475 to $490 here locally, so a lot more Airbnb's, and that could attribute to some of the downage in hotel usages, you know, a lot more Airbnb being used. Berkeley and Jefferson CVBs have teamed up with Lori Rowe and company. They're a company out of Atlanta, Georgia. They came up, I guess, last week? Yeah, I want to say last week, and they toured all over Berkeley County and Jefferson County. They went to a lot of different sites within the county, parks, restaurants, roundhouse, historic places. They're basically a PR group that bring in travel writers. So they have a website, and travel writers go to their website and look for places that look of interest in, and they travel there and write stories about those things. So basically, they were here in Berkeley and Jefferson cataloging things they felt of interest to put on their website for these travel writers to look up and maybe come visit Berkeley County and maybe come write about Berkeley County. They seemed to be very enthused. I did get to meet the group and talk to them for a little while last week for lunch, and good group of ladies and gentlemen. And they did a one-to-two-year contract tentative. They split with Jefferson because it's kind of expensive. It was about $22,000 per CVB a year, total $44,000 per year. And let's see what else. They put together a committee to start reviewing the grants, because they're getting so many grant applications now for money over there. Instead of just Mark or Susan going over those grants, they put a committee of board members together, and they'll review the applications, decide whether they're qualified to move forward and present to the board to be awarded or not be awarded. Kind of weed it out, because they felt like just Mark or Susan making the decisions wasn't really as beneficial, and a lot of people weren't filling out the paperwork right, and they felt bad that they were declined. So this group will make a decision of whether it goes to the board to be approved or denied. Their next meeting is actually moved to the last week of May, and it will be held at Black Draft Distillery on the 28th of May. There's a lot of activity going on with the film industry. Some films just wrapped up. There's some new films coming in, and I'm pretty sure we have landed the huge film that we were trying to get to come through. It's like a $50 to $75 million film, and they hope to do two to three films over the next several years. They're looking at some properties now to actually put in a production company office and then maybe get a warehouse space for, or infrastructure for a soundstage and such. So that's a, that's a big, big thing there. Geo Woodstock is in the May, Geo Cashing Woodstock is in the May in Morgantown. There's already 6,000 signed up, and they hope to have almost 10,000 there. Mark will be there, representing Berkeley County to, you know, we're one of the top Geo Cashing counties in the state of West Virginia, so hopefully he can get up there and drag a lot of tourism and stuff for this summer and this way through that. And that's about it.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Hardy.
Yeah, I only had one board meeting this week. Met with the water board, and they, pretty standard meeting, did talk about their upcoming budget. They're kind of in good, they're in good shape for their budget to finish out this year, the fourth quarter of their fiscal year. Looked like their upcoming budget, they're going to be in pretty good shape. It's about a $30 million budget for the water department. In July, they will activate the 23.5% increase in water rates that was already built into the five-year rate increase that had already been improved. Unfortunately, this is the year that the 23% increase hits. This is the biggest bite, the one that will have the biggest sting for our water users. The next ones are like 5%, 6%, 7%, something like that. But this was already a pre-planned five-year rate increase that had been approved with the water board. They put out to, made all the final decisions for the company that will be building the two water towers, one on Ridge Road, and I believe the other one's going up in the Mill Creek area, I believe, or somewhere.
It's near Clorox.
Yeah, near the Clorox. So all the final stuff for that. I would like to reach out to my constituents in Bennington. I've been getting some calls about the CMC project and the traffic through Bennington, and have reached out to CMC, and they are hopeful to have their access road open and available for construction entrance by the end of this month. So that will deter a lot of that traffic that's coming down through Bennington, coming into the back entrance there.
Mount Theopexan Road.
Yeah, the Mount Theopexan Road. So they had been held up somewhat for a DOH permit, and they were working through that, and hopefully will have their working road, just for construction road, will be finished by the end of this month, and that will deter that traffic. So that's really all I have to report. Just, I don't think I have any more meetings this week, so.
Yeah, and John, CMC has been as responsive in trying to address the traffic issue as they can.
They have.
And I'd like to thank them also for their hourly employees. A lot of those go in on Dupont Road, and they actually board a bus, and they take them into the job site instead of having all those cars on those roads.
Yes, they were very responsive when I reached out to our point of contact there and got back with me very quickly, so.
To their time.
Their work.
We need to continue the fight with the DOH about putting the stoplight at that access road on 11.
Yeah, and I think that's going to be a continued battle to have a signal at that intersection with some turn lanes and make sure that we are going to do our due diligence to make sure that that is a safe intersection.
Good. Commissioner Whitaker.
I did not have any county meetings, but however, I was in here on Tuesday with our staff as we did the interviews for the healthcare proposals that they all presented. There'll be more to come to that later.
Thank you. Mr. Kevin.
Board meetings, I only had one last Thursday evening, our ambulance authority. I want to commend them. I want to read, they hired this firm, J.R. Henry Consulting, and their overview was this, optimizing the EMS billing process is essential for accelerating cash flow, reducing claim denials, improving staff efficiency, and maximizing net collection. So I commend them on hiring this firm to come in and do a, you know, internal study with them to make it better, so I appreciate their efforts on that. And of course, we're still waiting for those seven new ambulances to come over the next several months, so. Also, I wanted to commend Commissioner Boyd on his bow tie this morning. Some of the smartest people I've ever met in my life wear bow ties. Dr. Gee at West Virginia University, when we were down at the Department of Transportation, the new director, Rumball, he wore a bow tie in that meeting, so I think that's what influenced HD to go that way, so. And hopefully it'll help us with some road projects, so.
Yeah. Well, you know, when we met with them about the road project, they did speak about that stoplight, and they said they were more than positive it was going to be put there. They were just waiting on drawings.
And also, I was fortunate enough last Thursday evening to attend the Stephanie Pearson Youth Champions Dinner for the Boys and Girls Club, and Joyce Keys, if you lived in South Berkeley County, you don't have to know Joyce to live in South Berkeley, but she's Miss South Berkeley County. And Commissioner Goganar was one of her presenters and spoke highly of her, and it was a nice evening to be there, and she was well-deserving in receiving that award.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, it was a good, good evening.
Yeah, boss. Joyce says she's been a giver for a very long time, especially when it comes to kids. She's got a very soft heart and very generous people. So I had a landmarks meeting, which I was able to only do by phone, but they were able to receive a grant from the historic, they changed the name of, what was the culture?
Oh, history of, no, you're talking about arts, arts, history and culture?
Yeah. So they got a grant to do the LIDAR study at the Morgan Morgan Cabin. To the rear there is a cemetery, and it's not been documented, it's not been, it's not been proven out, but they truly believe that there is a cemetery there, so they're going to be doing a study there. And also, they are going to be doing some research on some mortar that they found on the site, which they think, and they believe, that it can date that church back to the 1600s. So that's really, really exciting news for the landmarks in the, in the history of the Morgan Cabin and everything that, on that property that goes with it. Commissioner Whitaker and I attended a ribbon cutting at the WVU East for the Rockefeller Neuro Center. They're making tremendous strides in improving the health care within WVU East, and also, as Board Chair Scott Roach mentioned, they're doing a $240 million investment at Berkeley WVU East, so, and that's an additional 500 employees. So they're really finally going to, I won't say finally, but Morgantown, WVU is making investments here that need to be made, and we're very thankful for that. And also, yesterday I attended a groundbreaking for the Mountain Ridge Primary, and it was very nice. It would be on the campus of the Mountain Ridge Intermediate and Middle School. It's also the same site where the proposed high school will be. So there's an additional 150 acres there for this primary school and the high school. So that's all, that's all new stuff and exciting stuff as well. And this morning, I had the pleasure to speak before the Chamber of Commerce, to talk about the county and all the good things, and all of our challenges, and just really a good morning, get started there. Today is Kristy Hadley's first day on that job, so wish her the very best and thank, lost me there for a minute. Randy Lewis. Randy Lewis for his, for his leadership until they were able to get somebody full-time. So let's go, let's go round me out. And right now, Commissioner Hardy, if you would swear in our honorary commissioners.
All right. I can have you two come up here and stand in front of the flag here. I'm going to swear you guys in. I'm going to do it at the same time.
I don't know if we ever had to do this.
I don't know, this is not, I've never had to do this.
So it's the king and queen here?
Still will, you stand here. Mr. Antonetti, you stand there. If it gets you guys to raise your right hand, I'm going to swear you in. I state your name.
I.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of West Virginia.
And the Constitution of the State of West Virginia.
That I will work hard to fulfill my responsibilities.
That I will work hard to fulfill my responsibilities.
Of the Office of Honorary Commissioner.
Of the Office of Honorary Commissioner.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right. Thank you guys very much. Here's your certificate here for you guys. Here's yours, Isaac. Here's yours, Madeline. Little certificate here. Now, you guys feel free to chime in. Anything that we're discussing here in the meeting today, if you guys want to add to it, please feel free. And after we get a little break here, we'll take some pictures, but we thank you guys for being here. We appreciate you taking interest in local government and coming here and spending the morning with us. So thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Could each one of you tell us?
Almost forgot. Almost forgot, yeah. So just tell us a little bit about yourselves and maybe what you want to do in the future.
My name's Ozzy Antonetti. I will continue my academic career at Martinsburg High School. I plan to be a veterinarian. I want to go to somewhere in Maryland College, any of the Ivy League schools, I'm going to try and have a reach. I plan, and I do play lacrosse. I'm going to try and play lacrosse at Martinsburg High School as well.
Great. Madeline?
My name's Madeline Stilwell. I plan to work in the police force and go to high school in Mussum. Going to try and stay in choir throughout that.
Wow, you're thinking about being a police officer. Wow, that's, that's great news. That's great news.
Being a fireman's a little better.
Yeah. Firemen always want to be police officers. I know. I hear that. Well, thank you all very much for being here this morning and being a part of our, our meeting. We appreciate it. So if you guys want to take your seats, like I said, if you have anything to add to our meeting, please feel free.
We're just a few minutes ahead of schedule, but Ben Griffin with Tishler Vice, if you're, if you're ready to come forward and it's a draft on the impact fee presentation. Good morning, Ben.
All right, good morning.
Morning, sir.
How's everyone doing this morning?
Doing well.
All right, so I want to give you an update on the impact fee study. You know, I was here a few months ago for the kickoff meetings and, you know, talked to the department, really trying to figure out, you know, what are those growth-related needs? So I'll give you a quick refresher on impact fees. We'll look at the projections for the next 10 years and then we'll look at the actual level of service analysis, so the fee calculation for, you know, each of our five proposed fees. And then we'll, you know, take a look at, you know, how does that look cumulatively? So what is the total proposed fee by different land uses? And then how do you compare, you know, to your neighbors? So impact fees are one-time payment for growth-related infrastructure. Generally, it's collected at the time of the building permit and it's meant to have future development pay for their fair share of capital expenses. So we're not going to use impact fees for operations, maintenance, repair, replacement, rehab, anything like that. It needs to be new capital facilities that add capacity. It's not a tax. It does contractually bind you as a county to, you know, provide a benefit to the fee payer. So they give you the money and then you construct or acquire that capital infrastructure that they've just paid for. So there, there are essentially three things we have to prove in an impact fee study. So there's need, there is benefit, and then there is proportionality. So with need, that's an easier one to prove, you know, it looks like you will have continued growth and we know that you have capital needs. So need is generally the easiest one to prove because we're saying, hey, this continued growth will make us fund additional capital. Next, proportionality, you know, we want to make sure that the fees are proportionate to the demand. So as we go through these fees, you'll see, you know, that sometimes the residential fee is based on, you know, population. Sometimes it's based on, you know, students or public school students generated by each type of housing unit. On the non-residential side, you'll see, you know, we use employment sometimes. Other times, we may use vehicle trips generated, but it's a way to vary the fees. So each fee is proportionate to the actual demand for that capital infrastructure. And finally, you know, we want to make sure that the fee payer receives a benefit. And so benefit, there's sort of a two-part benefit to this. We can look at geographic service areas. And so in this case, all the fees are proposed in, for the unincorporated area, so there's just a single service area. But also, we want to make sure that you're spending the money in a timely manner. You can't just sit on this for, you know, 20, 30 years. You know, once, once you receive that money, you need to spend it within a few years to make sure that that fee payer is receiving the benefit. Right, there are three impact fee methodologies. They look at points in time. So when we're looking to the past, that's going to be a cost recovery approach. Essentially what we're doing here is saying, hey, we have excess capacity and we want to have future development buy into that excess capacity. If we're looking to the present, that's the incremental methodology. So it just says, this is our existing level of service. We want to maintain that going forward. So what would it cost to maintain that level of service going forward? And finally, if we look to the future, that's a plan-based approach. So maybe you have a CIP that says, you know, we need, you know, X, Y, and Z capital improvements. So how do we get there? What is future development share? You know, you can't charge future development a higher level of service than existing development receives. So maybe those planned improvements increase the level of service. So we need to make sure that we've identified some sort of outside funding source to pay for existing development share. Again, making sure that we're not charging future development for a higher level of service than existing development receives. We also need to look at credits. So the credits, we sort of break up into two parts. So there's a site-specific credit. So if a developer constructs something or, you know, dedicates the land for, you know, a park or a fire station or a police station, you would, they would receive a credit against the impact fees they're supposed to pay because they're providing something that's in the study. The debt service or dedicated revenues, those would be in the actual fee calculation. So what we want to make sure is that, you know, future development isn't paying once through the impact fee and once through some sort of, you know, future revenue source, basically charging them twice. And so if there's, you know, debt service or any sort of dedicated revenue, we can include that that credit into the impact fee calculation. So it reduces the impact fee to offset those future revenues. So again, they're not charged twice. So site-specific is handled, you know, after you adopt debt service or any sort of dedicated revenue. That's in the impact fee study to reduce the fees, you know, before you actually adopt them. All right, so now development projections. We're looking out 10 years and, you know, West Virginia University has some projections and, you know, we started with that and it looked like maybe they were going to be a little conservative based on your recent growth trends. And so in discussions with staff, we decided to look at, you know, your, your permit history, your building permit history from 2020 through 2024. And the assumption is you would grow in a similar manner as you have from that time period. And so this does show more population growth than WVU was showing. And so essentially what this is saying is we think, you know, over the next 10 years, the unincorporated area would grow by about 35,000 people. And we can convert that to housing units because you're going to assess the fee to residential development per housing unit. We can convert that using census data to say, hey, on average, a single-family unit has this many people. On average, a multifamily is this, a mobile home is this. And so we can convert that population increase into a housing unit increase. And so, you know, our estimate is that you would see about 14,500 additional housing units over the next 10 years. On the non-residential side, you know, we, we looked at a lot of different sources and the one that made the most sense was looking at the ratio of population and jobs in 2024. And the assumption is, you know, going forward, you would maintain that ratio. So if we have 35,000 additional persons, then maintaining that ratio, we'd expect about 8,200 additional jobs in that 10-year period. And we can convert that employment growth to the actual non-residential square footage using their employment density factors from the Institute of Transportation Engineers. And we can convert, you know, that, you know, 1,400 additional industrial jobs with that ITE multiplier to be, you know, about 800,000 square feet of non-residential floor area. So all this to say that for most of your fees, we're actually using an incremental methodology. So the base here is the most important because we're setting that existing level of service. If you grow by 70,000 people or you grow by no additional jobs, it doesn't affect the fee calculation if we're using an incremental methodology because it's just saying, this is what we're charging for to maintain the level of service. So if you grow faster, you generate more fee revenue, you build or acquire more. If you grow slower than we're projecting, you generate less fee revenue, so you have to build or acquire less. So a lot of communities like the incremental methodology because it does protect the general fund from changes in the development cycle. So, you know, with a plan-based or a cost recovery where you're saying, okay, we think we're going to grow by this much and we're allocating this cost to that growth. If you, you know, come up short, you, you know, you've already collected the money, so you need to provide that benefit, so provide that infrastructure. So in, you know, that case, you would be making up the difference with some sort of, you know, general fund money or maybe you have to, you know, issue debt. So again, a lot of communities do like the incremental methodology, especially after the recession, because it does insulate the, the general fund from, you know, any sort of slowdown in, in the market. Are there any questions on sort of impact fee fundamentals or the development projections?
I have questions. So all the information that you're giving us on how these impact fees will be implemented and how they are spent and, and, you know, how we will use them for growth, making sure that we're not double taxing or overburdening any new growth. With that being said, what is the regulatory body of this, that implements these regulations on this impact fee? Is it the state legislature? Is there, is there a state code? Is that the regulatory framework for this?
Correct. The state of West Virginia has said, this is your enabling legislation. And if I'm not mistaken, you know, there was a, a change in wording that made where the counties.
Sure, there was one, yeah, there was one line that was removed to let counties be able to have this fee.
Exactly.
But there is a, a framework of a regulatory agency that has, this is already statutorily written at the state level?
Yes. It's a, we, our study is designed to follow that framework.
Okay, got you. Okay. And do you know what agency that falls under?
I'm not sure.
The economic development or not, not sure where, what agency, state agency that, that the statute would fall under?
Not sure.
Okay. Okay, but the regulatory oversight of the program?
Other than the auditor's office and filing. Something specific.
Okay. And that, that leads to my next question. So the implementation of this, if those, if there was something that you wanted to challenge or something that you wanted to change in the implementation of this, how, how do you go about doing that? If this is a statute that's written at a state level, but no agency is the regulatory agency of it, I'm, I'm trying to get my head around who controls this. So you tell us, these are the rules that we must follow. And we believe that. We, we believe that these are the rules that we must follow and we have all intentions of following those rules. And you're in this business to, to educate us on that. But who is a regulatory agency or who writes the statutes that says, these are the rules that must be followed? That's what I'm trying to get my head around.
The legislature drafted, passed the statute.
It's already been written.
That allows us to have impact fees, but did they write the regulatory messaging or the statute of how it would be ran once it is implemented?
There's very little guidance, but I mean, you have to figure that out.
That's the question I was trying to get answered.
I, I think that's what these guys are doing, right?
Yeah, but these, these guys are not a legal agency. They're not a state agency. They are, they, we have hired them to tell us the rules. These are the rules. We fully understand the rules and respect your education to us about the rules, but without, what is the, what is the regulatory teeth that are in this impact fee?
So Tishler Vice, their role in this process to help you define what the fees can be and draw all analytics. Past that, that's not the rule.
Okay, that's fine. That's not the rule they play. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and, you know, the, yeah, there's some things written into the enabling legislation, like you have to keep your impact fees separate from the general fund. So you'll set up separate impact fee funds for, you know, whichever of these impact fee, impact fees you, you adopt.
And there's state legislation that directs that?
Yes, and there's, you know, generally federal case law that supports that as well. And you generally, you know, if it's not specific at the state level, the assumption is you sort of defer to federal case law, which is why, you know, we talked about, you know, need benefit proportionality. You know, some, you know, state enabling legislations don't get that specific, but the, the assumption is you still have to prove that at a federal level. But yeah, you, you'll keep your money separate. But generally, you know, there's going to be a, a department within the county that will, you know, administer this. And, you know, there can be audits.
Audits by the state auditor?
Generally, it would be at the county level. You would, you know, audit to make sure that you are collecting the correct amounts, you are assessing the correct fees and that you're spending it on the correct, because you, you can't just collect, you know, fees meant for, you know, say law enforcement and then spend it on parks.
Sure.
Because it's, it's identified as a capital cost for a specific type of use.
To that point, Mr. Hardy, the auditor's office absolutely would look at the fund. It would be part of your, one of your then 58 funds that they would look at. And in those instances, whether it's state code that defines how it could be spent or a local ordinance, when the auditor comes in, they take that, the teeth, as you say, and they look at the money and say, okay, did the county commission and its staff do these things correctly? So it would get audited.
And I'm just asking because as, as an elected official, I need to be able to go back to my taxpayers and ask me questions and say, you've implemented this new impact fee and here's the money and the money's going to go to X. What is the oversight that says that that money will go to X? Right? And, and this body will always work very hard to make sure that we are following the rules and doing what we're supposed to do, but we need to be able to reiterate that to our taxpayers and people who elect us to sit in these seats.
Right. And, you know, because you don't have fees now, you know, these are the types of questions we generally get from a community who is looking to adopt fees because they want to dot all the i's and cross all the t's before they adopt anything because once you've adopted it, you know, you, you start collecting, so, you know, that gets out of the bag.
Right.
So you want to make sure that, you know, from an administration point, you, you understand everything.
And that's why we hired a company like you guys that understand it to tell us what the rules are and how to follow them. Thank you.
We have other fees now and it's all regulated through the auditor's office.
The auditor.
Our whole budget is the thing we do financially. It certainly be the oversight in my mind would be the auditor's office.
Any other impact fee questions or questions related to the development projections? All right. So we'll start with the county administration fee. The service here would be the unincorporated county. We have one component. It is a facilities component. The idea here is that we're maintaining the level of service. So the, the number of square feet per person or square feet per job, we just want to maintain that going forward. And so to do that, you'd need about 38,600 square feet based on those 10 years, 10-year projections. And that would generate just shy of $20 million. And this is the, the calculation. I'll sort of go into detail on this one, but you'll see a slide similar to this with every component. But, you know, I'm sure your eyes will start to glaze over if I go through every calculation. So, you know, like I said, I'll go over this one, but in, in the future, if you have questions, let me know about a specific one. Otherwise, I'm just going to sort of give you a, you know, a general explanation. But because this is an incremental methodology, we're saying you have, you know, just shy of 123,000 square feet today and we can divide that by your existing development. And so essentially what we're saying here is, you know, if, if you have about 121,000 people in the unincorporated county, you have about 21,000 jobs in the unincorporated county, we can divide that existing square footage by the existing development and say, hey, today you're providing, you know, .78 square feet per person. You're providing 1.35 square feet per job. And so we can apply that ratio to the projected growth. So that 35,000 additional people would generate demand for just shy of 27,500 square feet of calling this one again, county administration facilities. For non-residential, you know, if you grow by about 8,000 people or 8,000 jobs, then you'd need about 11,000 square feet to maintain that level of service. So that's where we're getting the 38,600 square feet of demand for, you know, facilities over the next 10 years. We, we have to assign a cost to that. And so we looked at the judicial center expansion. The cost of that is $20 million. It's 38,900 square feet. And so we're going to use this as a proxy for, you know, future, you know, facility costs. So that's $514 per square foot. So because we're using the, you know, incremental methodology, it doesn't lock you into using your fees for the judicial center expansion. You could use it for any sort of county administration facility expansion, building a new one. Or you could use it for this. And, you know, we're saying if you grow as projected, you would generate demand for 38,600 square feet and the judicial center expansion is 38,900 square feet. So in 10 years, you could essentially pay for this judicial. So, in 10 years, you could essentially pay for this judicial center expansion. If you didn't issue any debt, you could just sort of generate that fee revenue and use it instead of debt. Some communities, you know, maybe they generate fee revenue for a few years, and then they use that to reduce the amount of debt that you need to issue. And so, you know, five years, when you update this again, maybe you've finished the expansion, you know exactly how much, you know, debt you issued, and at that point, we switch it from an incremental methodology to a cost recovery. And so, it's saying, "Hey, we want to use our impact fees to retire this debt." So, just because we use, you know, a methodology on some type of capital facility doesn't mean we have to stick with it every time. So, again, right now, we can generate money towards that improvement, and then, once you build it, we can just switch over to a, a cost recovery if you issue debt and finish paying for it. So, based on the level of service, based on the, the cost factors, you can see that, you know, for a single-family unit, based on ACS data, just census data, you know, it's going to average about 2.52 persons per housing unit. And if the judicial facilities component is, you know, about $401 per person, then the proposed fee for the, the county administration component is about $1,000 per single-family unit. On the non-residential side, we have four proxy land uses that you would assess per thousand square foot, and then we have a lodging land use, which you would assess per room, but it's sort of the same calculation. We have a cost per job of $694 for county administration. We multiply that by the, you know, jobs per thousand square feet or the jobs per room, and those are from the Institute of Transportation Engineers. So, for an industrial use, you know, 1,000 square feet on average has 1.89 employees. And so, all we're doing is taking that, you know, cost per job, multiplying it by the, the jobs per thousand square feet. And so, for county administration fees, you would assess, you know, about $1,300 per thousand square feet of new industrial development. So, any questions on county administration, the calculation, anything like that?
Ben, that fee could address the debt service for the expansion of the judicial center. Is that correct?
People don't realize how huge this is for us. I mean, we have an unfunded mandate to do this, and we're going to have to spend $20 million whether we have the money or not, and we're going to have to borrow it otherwise. And to be able to have a source now to pay for this is huge for this county, and it's just an awesome thing. So, been long overdue, and we appreciate it.
All right. So, next we'll move to fire and rescue. Again, this is assessed in the unincorporated area of the county. We're looking at four components. So, there is a facilities component, which is using a plan-based methodology, and then there's a land component, a fire apparatus component, and a rescue apparatus component. Those are all incremental, so just maintaining that existing level of service. So, for the next 10 years, we're looking at building 24,000 square feet of, you know, fire and rescue facilities at a cost of $12 million. And then, for land, just maintaining the level of service, you'd need to acquire 11 and a half acres, which would cost about $1.7 million. For fire apparatus, you'd need eight additional units to make, to maintain that level of service, and that's just shy of $11 million. And then, for rescue apparatus, you'd need nine additional units to maintain the level of service at a cost of about $3.5 million. So, this shows your existing fire and rescue facilities and the land. So, what's important here is, you know, at the very bottom, where it says you have about 133,000 square feet and about 36 acres, we use that to show the existing level of service because, again, we can't charge development for a higher level of service than existing development receives. So, with facilities, you know, we're, we're looking at, you know, we could have built more. I, I think it, it supported, if you maintain your level of service, we could build up to about 42,000 square feet. But we, we looked at, you know, the, the plan to build 24,000 square feet. It, it kept the fee a little lower by, you know, using a plan-based approach to say, "Hey, we're, instead of 42,000, we're going to build, you know, 24,000." So, it did bring the fee down a, a little from the, you know, the, the original or the, the first proposed fee. But, you know, this just allocates the, the cost of that 24,000 square feet to 10 years of development. So, the idea here is that development over the next 10 years would pay for 100% of this, you know, planned 24,000 square feet, or about $12 million worth of improvements.
Ben, on that, to go back to that site-specific area that we covered a while ago, the developer or the builder could, in a sense, offer land as a proffer, basically, instead of the fee on a, on a site that was desired for fire and EMS. Carve out, you know, a couple of acres on a large piece of property for that, and they could, that would be deducted off of their fee. Is that correct?
That's correct. And so, this next one is the actual land component. So, you know, the idea here is you need additional land, so as you expand stations or build a new one, you would need additional land. Or, you know, beyond 10 years, you might be building stations, you know, outside of the, the 24,000 square feet of, you know, identified stations. So, maybe you need to think, "Okay, well, in 15 years, we know we're going to need this, so let's go ahead and acquire a parcel sort of in the area that growth is headed." And so, maybe that is on a parcel that someone's going to put in a 500-unit subdivision. And if that developer said, "Hey, we're going to dedicate, you know, this three-acre corner, you know, up against the arterial to you," well, then, the idea here is, "Okay, well, that's, you know, $450,000 worth of, you know, land, so we need to credit them for that against their, their impact fees."
So, you have the valuation of the land in your calculations?
That's correct.
So, the land wouldn't be, the, the calculation for the cost of the property would not be in its unimproved state or its improved state? It would, you already have the calculation for what it's valued at?
That's correct. We're, we're using this. Now, it, it also works as, "Hey, we're, we're using this to acquire the land." And so, in some cases, you know, it might be, it's 200,000 an acre. But we are using our best estimate for right now. This is also why you update your fees, you know, every three to five years, because as you continue to grow, that, that land value, you know, that was further out is going to increase because now development is, you know, encroaching on it. And so, you know, any sort of, any of these factors, it's our best estimate for today, but, you know, it's, it's a point in time. So, as soon as you adopt, you know, it, it's an old number. But yes, the, the assumption is we're going to use 150,000 per acre, and so, they would receive a credit against their impact fees for that.
I just wanted to clarify that because there's a big difference in, the county could say, "Well, it's, it's valued at this and it's unimproved state." And now, the developer says, "Well, we could have put X amount of there, and it would be worth this. We think it's worth that." So, this takes out the gray area, even though, as soon as this is implemented, it becomes somewhat outdated.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right. For fire apparatus, you have 25 today. This is, you know, your aerials, your pumper, your, you know, rescue, your tankers, things like that, not the, you know, next, we've got the, the rescue apparatus or your ambulances. So, this is more fire with the fire apparatus. We have the rescue apparatus separate. But the idea here is, you know, you've got 25 apparatus today. As you grow, you would need to acquire additional. So, as you're adding bays to those existing stations or you build a new station, you need the apparatus to, to go in there. And so, you know, we, we take the average cost of your existing fleet, and, you know, based on that, we can say, "All right, well, if you've got 25 today, you need about eight to expand your fleet, maintain that level of service." And, you know, they're about $1.4 million apiece. And so, that's how we're getting that, you know, $10.7 million cost. We know that the cost of these has really spiked over the last two or three years. So, you, I, I say you should update every five years. Some communities do it sooner if costs are escalating quickly. And so, you know, this, this could be for, you know, construction costs, it could be for land costs. At the point where you start seeing that costs are really different from what we've included in the study, or development patterns have changed compared to that, at that point, it makes sense to do an update. So, it, you know, it could be at year three that you're deciding, "Hey, we, we need to go ahead and do this, this update because things have changed." But, you know, really, you should be doing it, you know, at least every five years. All right. So, for the rescue apparatus, this is, you know, your ambulances and support vehicles. You have 27 today. The average cost is, you know, about $412,000. So, those, you know, eight and a half units that you need to maintain the level of service would cost about $3.5 million. And so, this just shows the proposed fire and rescue fees. So, again, taking the cost per person, multiplying it by the, you know, average persons per housing unit. So, for a single-family unit, that's about $1,400 for fire and rescue infrastructure. For industrial, you know, we're multiplying this by the, the vehicle trips generated. And so, 1,000 square feet of industrial would pay $770 for their proportionate share of fire and rescue capital costs. So, any questions about the fire and rescue fees? All right. Up next, we have law enforcement. Again, unincorporated service area. We're looking at two components, a facilities and a vehicles component, using incremental methodology to maintain that level of service. You'd need about 10,500 square feet of additional facilities over the next 10 years, and you need 24 additional vehicles. So, we have fire facilities, or sorry, sheriff facilities. You have plans for a north substation and a south substation. The cost of those is about $500 a square foot. And so, we're using $500 a square foot as a proxy for future because, again, this is incremental, so we don't want to lock you into a specific project. You can use your impact fees towards these projects. You know, we're saying that you would generate enough for 10,500 square feet. These total 15,000, so you wouldn't be able to build both of them with impact fees within the 10 years if you grew exactly how we're projecting. But, you know, maybe you build one in, you know, the next five or six years, and then, you update your fees, and then, that next 10-year period, you're, you're building the other one. Or maybe something changes and you want to, you know, expand, you know, the, the existing sheriff's department. It provides that flexibility to respond to changes in, you know, your actual capital needs. But you could definitely use it for these, these two planned substations. It just likely would not cover 100% of the cost within 10 years. It'd just be, you know, probably at 15 years that you would, you'd have enough to do all of them. But you would need to spend, start spending your money before that, because, again, you need to spend the money, you know, within a few years to make sure that the fee payer receives that benefit. Sheriff vehicles, you have 75 patrol vehicles today. It costs $89,000 to acquire an outfit, one of those patrol vehicles. So, maintaining the level of service, you'd need about 24 at a cost of about $2.1 million. So, for law enforcement fees, a single-family unit would pay $372. Industrial development would pay $202 per thousand square feet of floor area. Any questions on law enforcement?
So, as we, as we attempt to add on additional deputies, the vehicles could actually be covered by the impact fee, correct?
That's correct.
Yes, sir.
You can't replace a vehicle.
Yes, sir.
It would expand the fleet.
Say that again. You cannot replace an existing vehicle with these funds. You can only purchase a new vehicle for expansions of new officers.
Exactly.
Or staff.
You can't use impact fees for repair, replacement, rehab. It needs to be new capital facilities, adding additional capacity. All right. Next up, we have parks and rec. Again, unincorporated area is your service area. We're looking at four...
Most exciting category, by the way.
That's right. That is right.
Point that out.
So, we're looking at four components. There's a land component.
How many years, sir? Too many.
There's the amenities component, a trail component, and a recreation facilities component. All these use the incremental methodology, so just maintaining the existing level of service. So, based on 10 years' projected growth from residential development, because you're not going to assess these to non-residential, you would need to acquire 124 acres of land to maintain the level of service. You would generate fee revenue of about $3.9 million for the actual amenities in the parks. You would generate about $266,000 to construct, you know, about 2.8 miles of additional trails. And then, you would generate about $1.3 million to construct 5,300 square feet of recreation facilities. So, that could be expanding an existing facility. It could be, you know, building a new one. It could be, you decide, "Hey, this, you know, fire station, we're going to co-locate a, you know, rec facility with it." Again, it just provides you with a lot of flexibility because it doesn't lock you into a specific project. It just says, "You need to add 5,300 square feet of facilities wherever it benefits development."
Question? You have 124 acres needed in 10 years, $18.6 million. If we could purchase 124 acres for $6 million, would we still allow them to purchase additional acreage above that as long as we stay within the cap of the financial of 18 million?
Yes. So, one benefit of the incremental methodology is that, you know, you're going to collect for a year, and then, you know what you collected last year. And so, it may be that, you know, you collect for two or three years, you say, "Hey, we've got this much," and a parcel becomes available. And maybe it's, you know, it, it's less than 150,000 an acre. You go ahead and grab that. So, you, essentially, you've saved money on some of that land acquisition, but maybe in a few years, another parcel comes up, but maybe it's, you know, 200,000 an acre. It, it sort of balances out with that incremental methodology because you sort of spend what's in the, the fund to maintain that level of service. It does provide you that flexibility so you can just acquire as parcels become available.
It's still exceeding acreage, but as long as you stay within the parameters of the financial cap.
Right. Again, the assumption is, on average, it'll be 150,000, but we know that sometimes you'll be able to acquire for less, sometimes it'll cost more. All right. For park amenities, you know, we, we looked at your existing amenities. You have 294 today. We looked at, you know, what it would cost to build a similar amenity today. And so, the, you know, average cost of existing amenities is about $45,000 per unit. So, you know, if you need about 86 additional amenities, that's how we're getting that $3.9 million in, you know, projected fee revenue, because we're just saying, you know, 85 and a half units times $45,000 is, you know, about $3.9 million. And again, it doesn't lock you into spending these at a specific park site. You know, if you want a pickleball court at one park and you need a restroom or some, you know, field lighting at another, it provides you the flexibility to, you know, make those improvements at existing parks or, you know, at a new park. With trails, you have nine and a half miles today. It's $95,000 per mile to construct a trail. So, that 2.8 mil, or 2.8 miles of trails that you would need to maintain the level of service would cost about $266,000. And then, the, the rec facilities, your existing facilities, 18,200 square feet. So, again, just maintaining that level of service, you need 5,300 additional square feet, and the assumption is it's $250 per square foot. And so, that's where we're getting that $1.3 million.
And again, that could be added on to an existing facility because of the growth and not necessarily a new facility.
Exactly.
Right.
So, for the, the park and rec fees, again, assessing these only to residential development. So, a single-family unit, the proposed fee is about $1,700. Any questions with parks and rec? All right. Next up, we have schools. So, you know, assessing this in the unincorporated area. So, you know, assessing this in the unincorporated area. We we looked at a lot of options for schools. And, you know, schools are generally one of the more complicated components because, you know, you're looking at enrollment growth, but, you know, we have to think of it as, all right, well, what component of that enrollment growth is really coming from new development? And, you know, how much of it is actually coming from, you know, an empty nester moving out of a home and a family moving into it? And so that's, you know, your existing housing stocks are turning over, and your enrollment growth could happen from existing development, not new development. And so, you know, we we started off looking at, you know, all school levels, so the facilities, the land related to those, you know, support vehicles, maybe administrative facilities. And, you know, we we looked at the the most recent enrollment projections provided by the district. And, you know, we we really settled on, you know, let's focus on, you know, elementary schools, that the facilities and the land, and not focusing on middle school and high school. We'll get to, you know, the justification of that in a couple of slides. But, you know, what we're saying here is, based on 10 years of projected growth, you need 55,000 square feet of elementary schools to respond to enrollment growth over the next 10 years. And you would need about 16 acres of land for that that school. So with school fees, we're only going to assess these to residential development. And instead of, you know, assessing per person like we do with all the other fees, we assess these per public school student. Because really, the demand for infrastructure is driven by, you know, the the public school students in that housing unit. And, you know, we we start off by by looking at essentially census data for the county. And then we can back out the number of students in, you know, private schools or charter schools. And then we adjust that number to actual enrollment. And so based on, you know, all those calculations, we can say, hey, the average single-family unit is going to generate .424 public school students. A multifamily unit is going to do about .22. And a mobile home would generate about .279. So we're talking in, you know, points, you know, partial students. So sometimes it's easier to talk about, hey, if we got 1,000 housing units, what does that look like? So 1,000 single-family units would generate 424 students. So that's, you know, almost 200 elementary school students in those new single-family units. That's 92 middle school students and 135 high school students. You know, a multifamily unit would generate slightly less, so 220 total.
It doesn't doesn't automatically equate to the big public school students, though. Because if you're you're garnering 424 new students, doesn't mean that they'll all be public school students. We've seen a trend in Berkeley County that we are generating 1,400 new homes per year, but we're only garnering about 193 new students a year in our public schools. So just because we're garnering those new homes and those new addresses and those new families, it doesn't mean that we're that the public school system is growing by that number. I understand this is just part of your calculations, but that's something that we'll need to keep an eye on.
Yeah, and, you know, keep in mind, this is for the lifetime of that unit.
Yes, sir.
And so while it may not have a public school student in it when it's built, at some point in the future, you know, that that unit may turn over, and then you have a public school student in it. So, you know, just with all of these components, it's it's designed to pay for the the capital costs of that unit or that non-residential development for the lifetime of that that structure. But yes, we we we've looked at the trend with the charter school students. And, you know, that was, you know, one thing that we struggled with, making sure is, when you use census data, you know, it's a point in time. But we understand that, you know, as additional charter schools open, they may siphon off additional students. And, you know, because this is a point in time, this is something that a trend that's emerging, and in three to five years, when you update, we'll look at it again. And it may be that at that point, you know, we have lower student generation rates for, you know, certain school levels or all school levels. But at that point, we would just update and, you know, recalculate that fee.
That's just my thought, that it's something that we need to watch. We have two students here today, one of those students goes to a private school, and, you know, I'm the chairman of the board of a virtual academy. So, I mean, those alternative educations are growing.
Right.
That's what everyone needs to understand, what you just said. Even though we start out with this amount of fees, we can adjust it to our choosing at any time.
Right, you can you can adjust it downward. Everything that we're showing today is maximum.
But if your projection is this, and we're lower, then we could actually project it higher if we chose to in the future, as long as you stay within the parameters of your your max.
That's correct. As long as you don't increase the fees above what we're showing, then you're fine. Correct. And, all right, so this slide shows the the recent and projected enrollment, and this really speaks to the that the growth in charter school enrollment. Because if we look at the last five years, you know, pre-K through five, your overall enrollment is down nine students. And, you know, when we break that out a little bit more, you know, we can see sort of the trends of those, some of those students going to charter schools. We look at middle school, you know, down 177 overall, but high school, you know, up 475 students. And, you know, it's my understanding that, you know, a lot of your charter schools right now are really looking at elementary and middle school students. So this is a trend that could continue as, you know, charter schools add high school capacity. But really, what we're wanting to show is, hey, this is how you have been changing for enrollment. And then based on the 2024, 2025 demographics and enrollment projection study, you know, this is what the district thinks will happen over the next 10 years. And so, you know, elementary school would grow by a little over 500 students. Middle school would grow by about 250, and high school would grow by, you know, just shy of 120. And so, you know, it looks like more of a reversal of what we've seen recently for elementary and middle. And then, you know, high school maybe has seen most of its growth, and, you know, it's, you know, it's, you know, it's sort of leveling off. Which then makes us think, okay, well, we want to make sure that there's growth, and we want to make sure that there's need. And, you know, looking at some of these trends helps us decide, you know, what what makes sense from a capital standpoint. You know, what should we include? And so, you know, if we look out, you know, to the future, you know, this shows the the proposed schools. And so you're adding about 5,500 seats with these planned improvements. And so that's, you know, about 2,700 at the elementary school level, 1,000 at the middle school level, and 1,800 at the high school level. So Hedgesville, those 1,000 seats, they're replacing some existing. And so really, it's only a net increase of, you know, 209 seats. So your impact fees, if we had a middle school component, could only go to about 20% of that school. You would need to fund, you know, the replacement of those, you know, 790 seats with some other revenue source, most likely debt. And so this is how we, the middle school component was the first one for us to say, hey, maybe it doesn't make sense because you're 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 likely to issue debt to build this school, and you can't use impact fees for, you know, 80% of this school's cost because it's replacement. And so, you know, that was how we, you know, started to come up with that discussion of, maybe we pull out the middle school component. So this shows elementary school facilities. This is all of your existing on the left. So you have, you know, about 9,400 seats today, and that's, you know, almost a million square feet of elementary school facilities. And so we can, we can take that and say, all right, well, you're currently providing about 103 square feet per student, about .03 acres per student. And we can compare that to that projection of, you know, 533 additional students. And you can see that, you know, current elementary school utilization is at 100%. If you do nothing, you don't build any more capacity, then at the end of 10 years, you know, you're at 105%. You are planning to add that, you know, 2,700 seats. And so that takes you down to, you know, about 82%. And so, you know, obviously, this is less than what we were we were showing of, hey, you need 55,000 square feet. And the idea here is, you know, you're issuing debt for some of these. Because if you're at 100% capacity, which, you know, we're showing 102% capacity next year, you're fixing an existing deficiency. So we know that the fees can't be used to, you know, correct a deficiency. And so the idea here is that, you know, you're going to issue debt for some of these schools. You'll use impact fees for some of them as well. And so it's sort of a blended approach. And you'll see the the debt credit that we include for elementary school facilities in a few slides. But we did feel like there was enough enrollment growth in the, you know, elementary school level that we could justify having a fee for elementary schools. For middle schools, this shows on the left, you know, you've got 5,300 seats. That's a little over 700,000 square feet. And then on the right, you see, you know, we're really only adding 209 new seats with the, you know, Hedgesville renovation and expansion. Enrollment growth is, you know, 251 over the next 10 years. So, you know, you're at 83% capacity utilization today. If you did nothing, you'd be at 87%. With this expansion, you're 84%. So really, just a slight increase in your utilization. And, you know, we we looked at this and said, well, you know, because of the limited enrollment growth, because you have to spend your fees within six years, and because the majority of Hedgesville is ineligible for impact fees, we don't recommend an impact fee for the middle school level. It makes sense to, you know, issue debt for that. And then maybe in five years, you look at this again, and, you know, maybe you're seeing more enrollment growth, and so maybe it makes sense at that point. But right now, we don't recommend a an impact fee for middle schools. Same thing with high schools. You have about 6,500 square, or 6,500 seats today, so you're at 95% capacity. You're you're going to build, you know, you're going to add 1,800 seats, so that reduces your utilization rate. This is another one where we we looked at it and said, there's limited enrollment growth. You've got to spend your your fees within six years. And it it looks like this is, you know, sort of fixing some existing overcrowding. And so, you know, maybe in three to five years, we see more enrollment growth, and maybe at that point, we switch over to sort of a cost recovery. But at this point, we, you know, don't recommend a high school component. So we talked about all the level of service analysis. Now we go over to the cost side. We we looked at recent SBA funding, and so on average, you know, the SBA share is about 23%. And so we use that in our cost calculation for the elementary school facilities. So the assumption is, you know, your SBA funding would be about 23%. We know you're going to issue some debt as well. You already have, I believe. And so what we're doing here is just saying, really, the local cost on elementary school facilities, based on these planned improvements, is $422 a square foot. So we can use that, we have that, you know, the the square feet per student. We can just multiply the 422 by the square feet per student to come up with the capital cost. We looked at the Falling Waters land acquisition from 2023. That was about $56,000 per acre. So the assumption is, you know, future land acquisition would also be about $56,000 per acre. Talked about debt credit. So you have about $88 million of existing debt related to elementary schools. We want to provide a credit for that because we don't want to charge once the impact fee and once through that, you know, future debt service payment. And then we also know that you'll have to issue additional debt because the impact fees won't cover all the costs. So there's, you know, essentially a gap between what we think the impact fees would generate and then the the total local cost. And that's about $34 million. So we want to provide a credit for that because, again, we don't want to charge once the impact fee and once through that future debt service payment. So proposed school fees, we take, you know, the the level of service, so 103 square feet per student for elementary school, assuming $422 a square foot. The capital cost for one student, one elementary school student, is about $43,000. We look at land, you know, it's about $1,700 per student. Then we include those credits. So really, the the net cost per elementary school student is about $36,000. We can apply that to the student generation rates. So for a single-family unit, you know, on average, generating, you know, .2 elementary school students, public school students, that's going to be about $7,100 in capital costs related to elementary schools. For a multifamily unit, it's going to be about $4,800, and for a mobile home, it's about $4,400. So these are the proposed fees for schools. You'll see that, you know, we're not showing a fee for middle school and high school because, you know, the the limited enrollment growth, the other funding sources, you know, replacing existing seats, you know, we we could not justify, you know, the the middle school or high school component, but the school fee is meant to add additional elementary school capacity. And then this shows the summary of all fees. So for a single-family unit, the maximum you can charge, based on what we had, you know, we included in the study, is about $11,700 per single-family unit. So residential assessed per unit, non-residential at the bottom, assessed per 1,000 square feet of floor area, unless it's lodging, and then it's assessed per room. And then finally, just a comparison of single-family, multifamily, industrial, and commercial to Jefferson County, their current and proposed fees. And then on the residential side, Frederick County, Maryland, because they do assess some to residential development. But, you know, this just sort of gives you a better idea of, you know, sort of where you compare to your neighbors. But keep in mind, this is never an apples-to-apples comparison. You know, Jefferson County, for example, they they don't include fire facilities in their fire and rescue fee. It's it's the rescue side. So they're also not doing the fire apparatus. So, you know, it's not easy to compare them individually, but, you know, a lot of, you know, councils or commissions still like to know how they compare. So there is that caveat of, you know, it's not apples-to-apples.
So this number that you just told us, that's 11,657, that is the ceiling, right? So that is the ceiling. So this commission is able to work any any number under that to be acceptable for what we would like to come up with?
That's correct.
I just want everyone to understand that the 11,657 is the ceiling.
Correct.
Thank you.
And parks and rec and school only qualify for the residential fees, where the other three, county administration, fire and rescue, law enforcement qualifies also for the non-residential fees.
That's correct.
I want people to understand that as well.
Yeah, and so if you decided to adopt if he lower, say, county administration, you said, hey, we're, we want to do a lower number. And I'm just making up stuff here. You couldn't say, okay, on the residential side, we want to adopt 75% of the fee. On the non-residential side, we want to do 50% because you're treating land uses differently. You would need to say, hey, we're going to do everyone at 50% or everyone at 75%, or we're going to phase these in, but the proportionate share, the relationship, has to stay the same.
Like saying that counties can keep some ad valorem tax, but not all ad valorem tax. Sorry, that's just a personal.
You need to say that again.
So if you adopt anything less than what we are showing, you have to use the same ratio for that entire fee.
Oh, oh, five?
No, so, like, say, say you wanted to- No, so, like, say, say you wanted to do less on county administration.
Right.
You couldn't do 50% on residential and 75% on non-residential. You would have to do...
50% on both, is what you're saying.
Right.
That category.
But that, but you could still use 100% on the others.
Correct.
Right, okay, I just wanted to clarify.
Right, and, you know, some communities, when fees are brand-new, you know, maybe they'll phase them in. And so, you know, maybe in year one, it's 50%. Year two, it's 75%. If you do something like that, some sort of phasing plan, it just needs to be uniform to all land uses as you're doing that.
I get it.
Okay.
Got a question?
Yeah, it's, it's a lot. So, thank you. I think you were very detailed in your presentation. I appreciate that. And you guys have any questions for...
I just wanted to ask the students, was this more boring than any of your board?
They're probably like, I'm ready to get back to science class or something.
No, I'm math class right now.
Take all that in.
This is pretty much math class.
Yeah, no, I'm good, I'll say.
Good. So to explain to you guys a little bit what this is, an impact fee is, the county is looking for growth to pay for growth. So when someone comes to get a permit to build a new home, there'll be a fee that will be applied, and that fee will be broken down and goes to different sectors of the county to help us pay for our police, our fire, our EMS, our Parks and Rec. So this is a way that we're letting growth pay for growth, so.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. And then we've got a lot of folks here, but, and we're really behind schedule, but we would like to take a five-minute break for everybody. So we're going to take a quick break.
This morning, we have thirty estates for final or interim settlement for the month of May 2025. All estates proposed for settlement this morning are identical to those found in your read ahead. Additionally, all estates proposed for settlement here this morning have been legally or actually noticed of their pending settlement status as prescribed by West Virginia law. Furthermore, my office has received no written notice of objection to date from any interested parties of these estates herein. Lastly, all claims of debt publicly filed against each of these estates have either been released as paid in part or in full by the creditors themselves, or the estate has declared to be insolvent, meaning that no probate assets remain to pay heirs, beneficiaries, and creditors alike. Without objection from any present interested party in the audience today, I ask for this commission's consideration for the approval of the thirty estates for final or interim settlement in the month of May 2025.
You've heard a request from Will. Need a motion?
Go ahead.
So moved, Mr. President.
I second that. If I'm moving second, any further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I was having. Thank you, Will.
Thanks for hanging out with us, Will.
No problem. I'm sure the students wish they were estate.
That's another really.
That kind of day to come up early, Will. It's all important stuff.
Yes, sir.
That's for sure. We're going to rearrange our schedule just a little bit. I'd like to go ahead and bring our Matthew. Would you please come forward with your proclamation?
Morning, sir.
We're here today to adopt a proclamation for Barclay Bart Rogers, who's joined us today. I don't know if he knew he was going to be recognized, but we wanted to, I think everyone wanted to surprise him a little bit, so surprise. So I'll go ahead and read the proclamation if you'll indulge me.
No.
I'll try.
Hey, Penny, turn it up.
Proclamation for Barclay Bart Rogers. Whereas Barclay Leith Bart Rogers was born in 1943 in Morgantown, West Virginia, and graduated in 1961 from Lumberport High School in Harrison County. And whereas Bart took his first solo flight in a Beechcraft T-34B Mentor on February 7, 1966 in Pensacola, Florida after being selected by the U.S. Navy to participate in the Naval Aviation Cadet Program while attending Salem College. And whereas Bart's subsequent military service included deployments to Okinawa, Japan, and Cameroon, Vietnam, where he flew over 2,000 hours as part of Operation Market Time, receiving the Air Medal. And whereas Bart has served as commander of the Martinsburg Civil Air Patrol and continues to fly a restored Stenson 10 to air shows around the country. And whereas Bart became the first Martinsburg area aviator to receive the Wright Brothers' Master Pilot Award in May 2018 from the Federal Aviation Administration, having safely flown over 6,000 hours. And whereas Bart's interest in learning more about the history of the Eastern West Virginia Regional Airport led him to becoming the Shepherd Field Historian, a volunteer role in which he has devoted countless hours, curating artifacts, photographs, and records at the Shepherd Fields Terminal Museum and Aviation Library. And whereas Bart's military service and contributions to preservation of aviation history in Eastern West Virginia and nearly sixty hours of safe flight are worthy of recognition, sixty years of safe flight are worthy of recognition and commendation. And now therefore be it resolved that the Berkeley County Commission recognizes Barclay Leith Bart Rogers as an inspirational voice for aviation history and distinguished citizen of Berkeley County for his contributions and wishes him all the best in the skies in the Congratulations, Bart.
Come on out. We'd love to hear it.
This won't be long. You know, I recognize many of you, especially you, Steve. He used to always call me when I was into the net playing volleyball. I still have never forgotten that.
Should have stayed out of the net.
Yeah, well, see how tall I am, Steve. Wasn't much of a spiker. Anyway, Barclay Leith, the only time I can remember hearing that was when my mother was mad at me. So strange to see that. But this is a great surprise. I just couldn't understand. It's like that we had a surprise birthday party years ago, and I remember they lied about that one, too, you know? And we wandered in, I said, man, look at all these people I know. What are they doing here, you know? Like today. This is an incredible surprise. And my wife Connie, as I was going, she said, now, where are you going today? And I said, well, I'm going to meet some guys. And I had on my shorts and my black t-shirt. And she said, you shouldn't go looking like that. I should have suspected something. So, thank you. I appreciate it.
Well, yeah, I would like to thank everybody for coming in, and it's a great pleasure to meet everybody again and honor Bart. Bart has done countless hours for the airport, his library, history. Matt, I want to try to, you know, it wasn't all a big lie. I did want you to meet Matt to see if we could put together some sort of a documentary of all the efforts that you put in. I'll take blame for some of it, but not all of it. Thank you, Bart.
He obviously was a better pal than he was a volleyball.
So we want to thank you for your service to our country, and you're continually giving. You're still giving. What a great heart. Thank you. Okay, that's going to round this out. We still have business to do. If anybody wanted to leave now, it's probably.
Can we get a picture?
Sure. Yeah, we'd love to be able to get a picture with you, Bart. If we can get a picture with you this morning, if you'd hang out just a minute.
Yeah, we got one here. Take a break.
Yeah.
He's going to lose all his family.
Yeah, let's just take a break. Busy day today. All right, we're back in session. Next up is Brian Ross, community director, community development director on the proclamation of Building Safety Month. Good morning, Brian.
Good morning.
Good morning. At least he's not OSHA.
What's that?
At least you're not OSHA.
Exactly.
Or MSHA.
I'd like to thank the commission members for the opportunity to come before you today for the proclamation for Building Safety Month. Before we get started, I have staff here. And in order for this to happen, there's a lot of people behind the scenes that work tirelessly to make this happen. So if I could take a second, and if you could at least raise your hand, I have Tammy Reese, Kendra Anoney, Teresa Hayden, Crystal Dagenhard, Steve Babering, Dan Tracy, Debbie Watt, Sean Becker, Ryan Eaton, and Melanie Fleets. These are the people in the calendar year of 2024 alone that was responsible for producing 3,235 permits, which generated a little over $1.5 million, and in turn resorted to over 18,000 inspections in the field from just this staff that you see right here. So it's a lot of work done by few people. So I felt they needed recognized for their efforts. So I will begin reading the proclamation. Excuse me. Proclamation for Building Safety Month, May 2025. Whereas Berkeley County, West Virginia, is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and essential role of our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play, both in everyday life and when disasters strike. And whereas our confidence in the resilience of these buildings in our community is achieved through the devotion of diligent guardians, building safety, and fire protection officials in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safety construction of buildings. And whereas these guidelines, or these guardians, excuse me, are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a nonprofit organization that brings together local, state, and federal officials who are experts in the building environment to create and implement the highest quality codes and standards to protect us in the building where we live, learn, work, and play. And whereas these modern building codes and standards include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildfires, floods, earthquakes. And whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown protectors of public safety, our code officials, who assure us of safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. And whereas Game On, the theme for Building Safety Month 2025, encourages all of us to get involved and raise awareness about building safety on a personal, local, and global scale. And whereas each year, in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by professionals in building safety and fire prevention departments protecting lives and safety. Now therefore be it resolved that the Berkeley County Commission does hereby proclaim the month of 2025 as Building Safety Month in Berkeley County and commends the hard work and dedication of the Berkeley County Building Permit and Inspections Department. And accordingly, we encourage our citizens to join us as we participate in Building Safety Month activities. Thank you.
Very good, Brian. Thank you. Thank you, staff. Honestly, I had no idea it was 18,000 field inspections. That's kind of crazy. But, you know, as we continue to grow, so will those numbers, and so will the demands be placed on your department. So thank you for what you do. You know, from the inception of somebody filling out a permit to plan review where it goes through your process, sometimes it gets marked up, sometimes it's probably okay. But to make sure that the building that's going to be built is built by, within the codes that we've adopted to ensure a safe structure for people to live and work in. And that, we think that's really important, especially when it comes to the life safety aspects of the building, so.
There's a lot of effort involved with staff from the initial application for legality, reviews, and everything to produce the documents that they produce.
Does anybody else have anything?
Yeah, as a longtime contractor, 30-year contractor in Berkeley County, I see a lot of familiar faces. I've worked with a lot of you, and a lot of you guys have been around for a long time in the office over there, and that's comforting to know. I mean, it's the, that institutional knowledge to be able to help contractors be able to figure out what they need to do and the right stuff that they need. Those things are constantly changing from what it was when I first started to where it is now. But we appreciate all your help, we appreciate your time, and we appreciate all you do. I know you don't hear that a lot. Sometimes people just want to come to you with their problems because they're upset about something that's changed, a regulation, or something that they didn't know about, and, you know, and understand it's just that they're frustrated sometimes. But we do appreciate all that you do, and it's nice to see a lot of familiar faces back there. So thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
And the turnaround time, when that application is submitted until the applicant, until the permit is processed and delivered, is approximately when now?
We're approximately out, and you guys in Berkeley on that, probably 15 days, about two and a half weeks.
That's awesome, you know, because a lot of these folks, time is money. You know, so, you know, thank you for that quick turnaround. That's really important. We don't get those calls we used to. Years ago, there were a lot of complaints about how long it took to get a permit. It took quite a while, for whatever reason. But that turnaround is much, much quicker now, and that's appreciated by a lot of people. Thank you.
I've been doing this gig for two years and four months, and all I've heard is positive from, about you guys. That's all I've heard. That speaks highly.
I can't imagine the staff and the increase in inspections over the last couple of years with the same staff. So hats off to all that you all do, and I greatly appreciate it. And be safe out there. That's what this is about. So thank you.
And hopefully, we're going to ask you to collect the impact fees here soon, so add a little bit more to your plate.
That'll be going through planning.
Quick math on that is about 70 inspections a day. That's a lot.
Yes. Yeah, the inspectors are tasked some days with a lot of work to do in a short amount of time. So everybody back there helping each other out to get the job done, even though some days are going to be very stressful.
Mr. President? May I? May I? Absolutely.
What Brian didn't say, and what you see with a very successful team is a leader that leads by example, right? He just said it right there, they have each other's back. Well, when somebody doesn't inspect, guess who changes these boots and takes off and jumps in and gets done? So the reason that that team is successful is your department head leads and works very hard. And to be honest with you, I pride myself on being early. Sometimes that man's here drinking coffee, he's just watching me walk in the door. So he's here first and oftentimes here last.
We know your dedication and your commitment to your job, Brian. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
That's why I actually contacted him yesterday, and I said, if you're working, please call me back. But if it's your day off, please ignore this call, because I don't want to bug you. But anyway, thank you all for what you do, and you make it, make us all look good. Thank you.
I'm just glad to see you didn't fall apart after John Dick left here after all these years.
Mr. President, their office is shut. If you want a picture, better do it quick.
Yeah, I'm trying to get good. So did you want to get a quick?
Do you want to make a motion?
Yes. Yeah. Where are we at? I need a motion to adopt the proclamation for Building Safety Month.
So moved.
Second. If I'm moving second, any further discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
I was having. Thank you. All right. All right, we're back. Next up is our Scott Wilson, the interview for the Civil Service Commission. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, sir. How you doing this morning, Mr. President? Doing fine, sir.
Missus, Mr. Williams, good to see everybody. Yeah, if you would, just give everybody a little bit of overview of where you are and what you want to do.
Well, I'm an old man, so that probably kind of sums it up altogether, one thing. But now, I'm here today to talk about, there's a vacancy on the local civil service commission, and I threw my hat into the ring, I'd like to serve again. I have experience and some knowledge of the civil service system, the way it's set up, and what we have to do. I was a deputy from '88 to '99, and during that timeframe as a deputy, I had to avail myself of the civil service system over promotional issues. So I understand from that level of what we went through and what we had to deal with. Several years later, I'd left the sheriff's office, went back to the guard full-time. But during that timeframe, the deputy sheriffs asked me if I would serve as their appointee, and I did for three and a half years. In fact, the first day that I went on to the civil service commission, the two commissioners that was there were so gracious to me, and they appointed me as the president of the civil service. So I served for three and a half years as president of the civil service commission. During that timeframe, we really went through a lot, because when I first come on, the civil service commission had been admonished by the circuit court for not having proper rules and regulations, and they had several outstanding hearing issues. So we had to dig into that deep and hard and fast and rewrite rules and do a lot of research. So I worked with that and did that for three and a half years. I left before my term was up, but I had to leave because in 2016, Curtis Keller filed for sheriff, and he asked me if I'd be his chief if he got elected, so there wouldn't be a conflict of interest. I stepped down, and of course, he became sheriff. Well, when he became sheriff, that made me chief, but now I got a chance to work with civil service in a much different aspect from the higher end. And first day, and actually, I got appointed as a chief deputy a month early, Kenny Lemaster, who's here, he was sheriff at the time, he appointed me early to, actually, to come in and help with the budget process. But that didn't quite work out so well. The very first day, we had a problem with a deputy in the courthouse that was so severe that by four o'clock that evening, we had to suspend him, take all of his equipment, everything away from him. We went into hearing board reviews, we went into civil service hearings with that individual. So got involved in that real quick, real fast as a chief deputy. That was on a Friday, I'll never forget it. Kenny was scheduled for vacation, and he left the next day for two weeks for Hawaii. And there I was as the new chief and dealing with all of that. Well, three days later, I'm in Charleston getting my certification back. I start to come back home, I get a call from back here, I need to get back right away because we had a deputy that there was a warrant for his arrest out from the state police, and we were trying to find him, so I had to come back and deal with all that. And it just, it seemed like it never stopped. So I have a lot of experience in dealing with civil service from all different levels, from the lower level as a deputy, from the level as a chief deputy and administrator, from the level as a member of the civil service commission. And currently, I'm serving on a special committee that's rewriting and updating the rules and regulations, and we've been working on that now for seven months. So I enjoy doing it. I don't mind doing the research, and I have an understanding of how the research process goes and what needs to be done. Because most people don't understand, civil service for deputy sheriffs is very important. It's protections for them, it's also protections for the sheriff, and it's good for the community. So I'd very much like to go back to the civil service commission and serve again and do my part to help them out. You know, the county's been good to me as an individual. I had the chance to work 16 years as a deputy, I worked 33 years at their National Guard right here in this area, born and raised here. I love, love my hometown, I love being here. They've given me a lot, I'd like to give a little bit back, and this is my chance to try to give some back. So I can promise you that you'll get my very best every day, and that I'll be available to do things and help out in any way that I can. So I hope you'll give me consideration to setting on the civil service commission.
Very good. Thank you, Scott. Let's go down the line, ask a few questions, and go from there.
You seem pretty well-versed. I really don't have any questions for you. Appreciate you applying, and thanks for you.
Yeah.
Appreciate you applying, and thanks for you. Appreciate your application, I appreciate all your service. I know that you know the board very well, and you've seen it from both sides, and appreciate that, and I don't have any questions for you.
All right, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Wilson? No questions, other than good to see you, and I hope you enjoy some of your retirement.
Thank you, sir.
Scott, I just appreciate the fact you're willing to serve and give back. Thank you for that.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
So, they make me give all, ask all the questions. But having served in all of your capacity, you feel as if you can be impartial when it comes to promotions, hirings, discipline, because that's, you've worked with a lot of these people that are still there in the past, and that's all I think anybody ever asks, is to be treated fair. Whether it's the deputies, you know, that may be in a discipline issue or promotion, you know, once the interviews are done, all they want to be is treated fair, according to the law. And I would certainly anticipate.
Well, yes, sir. And again, because of the experience, especially the three and a half years I sat on the Civil Service Commission, fairness has got to be across the board. It's got to be fair for the deputies, it's got to be fair for the sheriff, because that's what all comes out to be great for the community. And there are a few people here I know that have been with me during time frames, and they can tell you, when we make decisions as civil service, when I made decisions as a chief, it was all based upon what's fair, what the law allows, and what's right for everybody. And when I sat on the Civil Service and as the chief, believe me, the decisions that was made sometimes weren't well-liked by some, but it wasn't a matter of doing what's liked, it's a matter of what's doing what's right. Because if you don't follow those rules, then you set yourself up for failure down the road. So, we have to do what the right thing is. And reading the rules, and believe me, reading the rules isn't easy sometimes, because you get into it, and it's like, okay, now we got to do the research, we go out into the court cases, Supreme Court, and I've dealt with many of those, on those cases, and researched those. You interpret it the best way you can, what's fair for everybody. So, I think I have showed that in the past, and I will continue to do that, sir.
Very good. That's what we would expect. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Thank you all very much for your time, I appreciate your consideration.
Yes, sir. Next up, we've got Kenny Leamaster, candidate for the Civil Service Commission. Come on up, sir.
Just don't mess his bow tie.
Yeah. Good morning.
Good morning, gentlemen.
How you doing?
Okay.
Give us a little bit of overview of your past, and then we'll go down the line again.
Okay. I'm having a moment of deja vu after being up here, not having to be here for so long, having to be up here so much before. But I parallel with Scott a good bit, because, I mean, we started out together, and of course, I stayed, he got to go to the air guard. But I've been talking to Tony Petrucci, and I talked to Rob Blair, and just their concerns with civil service, and I heard there was an opening available. Didn't know really at that time I'd be competing with a guy I helped train and hung out with a lot, and we paralleled each other. Forty years with the sheriff's department, I went through all the different ranks that the sheriff's department has. I was appointed, actually, I was acting chief under Ron Jones, because we had, John Vorsdale had left as chief deputy, and I was a ranking officer. So, I started way back then doing the administrative stuff. Didn't have as much to deal with civil service back in those days, but then Randy Smith was elected, and I served as his chief deputy for eight years. And we had a lot of civil service hearings, a lot of issues, again, kind of relating back, it's kind of like, hard act to follow with Scott, but, you know, some of the same things that, you know, he talked about and dealt with. And then I had my own eight years as sheriff, and dealing on the other side of the civil service with him. And actually, I went through with Scott, because he was on civil service when we were rewriting and doing civil service rules and so, excuse me, so forth. But it was kind of trying to take the law and follow the law, but write things that was fair to the deputies, to the sheriff. And the biggest thing of civil service is to the community. Civil service protects the deputies, but it also, in a way, protects the community from bad actors. I mean, you know, it acts as a, I guess, a thing with the sheriff to protect the community, which I think the sheriff's job is, he's elected to that office by the people. It's the only law enforcement job really around that you get elected to, to represent the people of the jurisdiction that you serve in. So, I mean, a lot of things, like I said, it's got, without repeating what Scott went through, it's very similar to what I went through. The only difference is I never served on civil service, but I had to deal through civil service a great deal with all the different hearings and all the different investigations and so forth that was brought before then. And of course, as our current sheriff is having, is the hiring problem of getting enough applicants and getting the applicants through that you could hire. So, it's a thing that you got to have a lot of people, you know, working together, and I understand that, you know, this position that's available is to represent the county commission. So, it'd be, you know, a hand that I'd have to have some input or some information from the commission on what you feel on different things. As your representative, I feel that that's part of the job to, you know, consult and let you all know and update you what's going on, because, you know, a lot of times, you end up with lawsuits out of these things, and that impacts you all greatly, too.
Very good, sir. Mr. Boyd?
Yes, sir. And I really don't have any questions. Both of you seem very qualified. Sure, we'll come to a consensus somewhere, and appreciate you applying.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, very much for all your years and years and years of service. You know, you've been around here in Berkeley County for a long time and serving the people, and that's much appreciated, and I always say there's people-
And I feel it, too.
Yeah. I always say there's just people that have a heart for service, and when you kind of have that bug, it's hard to get rid of it. So, thank you for all of your service. I think we're blessed as a commission to have two people who are so qualified and have had such long careers in law enforcement, and know the system in and out. So, just, I thank both of you, and thank you for all your years of service.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Wilson? Eddie, I feel like I've been here a little bit less than what you have, but it's always been enjoyable to work with you on this, and I like to, like to think that you are still staying around to either irritate us or to, you know, keep us straight.
I like your thing, you all.
And that's kind of what I figured.
And I got broken in real well, because I was Scott's training officer.
I usually got broken up.
Yeah. We were a good pair.
Yes, indeed. But thank you for applying.
Sure. Thank you, sir.
Good to see you again.
I've known this guy for a long time. He worked, started working deputy sheriff my dad was sheriff in the 1970s, so he's a big one. That was a good memory, and I still thank him for that position, you know, because he- Been here ever since. Yeah. So, we appreciate your service all these years. Thank you for that.
Kenny, I'll ask you the same I ask Scott, you know, anybody, all they ever ask is to be treated fair. And I know that you've, I'm sure you still have relationships with some of the guys over there.
Not as many as I used to, about far. Yeah, I've been, Rob is the third sheriff since I've been there, been there, and so, there's, I think, a lot of worries gone all the way down with retirement, and with, you know, people just leaving and changing jobs and so forth. But I think so, I've been on all sides, I've been a deputy, like I said, come through all the ranks. I've been administrator as a chief deputy, as a sheriff, and now I'm a citizen, so I can see that aspect of it, too. So-
Okay. Well, thank you for applying, and thanks for coming in today.
Thank you, Joe. Eddie, I didn't get to pick on you very much, because we, just public service for a long time together.
Sure did. Sure did. Yep.
Now's your chance.
You know, he wasn't up here when I was sheriff, so I didn't get to pick on him much. In fact, you're about the only one that-
I'm, yeah, I'm the last one of the group.
Yeah, that's true.
Very good. Well, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Next up is Chief Eric Burnett. Good morning, sir.
You ever notice how Eric won't go in without Brandy?
I saw that. He's scared.
And he's always coming in-
Because she knows he's got to get back.
And he's always coming here asking. Always asking. She's like, "Shh, shh, shh."
Good to see you again, sir. Sheriff, I think he's confused who's the sheriff.
He's politicking.
He's politicking.
But it will be really fast.
Who's yours, sir?
So, we had four RFPs open from duty weapons for animal control, incinerator for us, a toolkit for our deputies, and a drug spectrometer.
You have to go through one by one, sir.
I will, I'm just going through all, just to let you all know what I got. So, the very first one is the new duty weapons. And there was one bid came back, Atlantic Tactical for 13, $24520, and it does meet our specs.
And out of your current operating budget for funding?
Out of our current operating budget.
Very good.
That's an easy one. I'll motion to approve that one, then.
Second.
And properly moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Ayes have it.
Second one is for a drug incinerator. Two bids came in, Mountain State Equipment came back with the lowest bid, it meets our specs, their price was $45,900. This is going to be paid through a Community First grant. In the grant, they awarded us $49,900, so it's going to come in under by about $4,000.
Where do you keep that?
Yeah, we got to talk about that. It's probably going to be put into a new pad that the county administrator promised us, alongside the building that he promised us. So, probably over behind 911. I have text messages and emails to verify all that.
So, there's an addendum to this motion?
No, this is just, I'm just, I'm just playing. So, the bid came out of $45,900 for the drug incinerator.
Can we use the difference to get your pad put in?
Well, I was going to ask for some things here when we're done, but yes.
Of course. Okay, need a motion to approve the RFP on the incinerator.
So moved. Second.
Properly moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Ayes have it.
This third thing is the drug toolkit, which is also going to be funded by the Community First grant. It was for 70 Desert Snow toolkits, which we've purchased before, not the sheriff's office, but I've had them before. The price that was awarded was $16,800. The bid came in at $16,796.50. So, it came in under by just a little bit.
And need a motion to approve the introduction toolkit.
So moved. Second.
Properly moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Ayes have it.
Okay, the fourth one is for the Raymond Spectrometer, and what this is, is it's a laser beam system that'll go ahead and tell you what the drugs are. Instead of having to crack the bag open and go inside of a drug test kit, you can go ahead and, just go ahead and search it right through the bottle, the bag, whatever, and that saves our guys from having to go ahead and crack open bags of suspected dope. There was six bids came in, the Community First Foundation gave us $60,676.58 for two of them. The lowest bid came in from Rigaku, if I said it right, at $54,320, so it came in well under. I looked the specs up, and it meets our specs.
You're getting two.
Two of them, yes, sir.
Does that use F for red, chief? You know?
It's some kind of laser, I don't know what it is.
Be careful with them.
Yes, sir.
They get really hot.
Yes, sir. I don't think it's hot.
Okay. Old technology got really hot. Okay, need a motion to approve the spectrometer.
So moved.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Ayes have it.
One of the other, there was five things that the Community First Foundation grant gave to us, and one of them was a drug take-back box, and we asked for $1,500 for that. We do have that currently, and it's being utilized, but the price came in at $2,903, so just a little bit over, like almost double what we thought it was going to cost. So, I was going to ask to take some of the money that we're not spending and float it over to here to cover that $1,500, well, about $1,377? Did I do the math right really fast?
Okay. Do that?
Is that like a secure box that you guys, that sits out, and people can just anonymously drop them in?
Prescription meds, go ahead and drop them in there, needles, whatever they want, yes.
Right.
Yep. And then the incinerators go and burn all that stuff.
Burn that stuff up.
I mean, no problem. Okay.
Okay. Since you guys brought it up-
Here we go.
Give us Scott an inch.
Since you guys, since y'all brought this up, is there a way that we could use some of this money? And I'm just asking, to go ahead and put up the concrete pad for the drug incinerator? Is that something that would be allowable?
We'll have to ask, we'll ask the foundation if it's okay to re-scope that piece. I would imagine the answer to that's yes, because it supports the incinerator, but we'll make sure.
Okay.
Either way, you'll get a pad, whether I promised it or not. They never talked about a pad, and I got blamed for it. How large of a pad is it, and what are the specs of it?
It'll probably be a, I don't know, a six-by-10 or something, concrete pad.
Do they provide specs with it? Like, how deep, how much steel needs to be in it? Any of that?
No, sir.
Look, wait, the real answer's coming. Watch, here it comes.
Lieutenant, we see this has gone off of the text for the actual incinerator, and there's what he needs, and that'll be like, um, the same, but we can get all of that.
Yeah, that's important. I mean-
This thing weighs a good bit, I assume.
And gets hot.
And gets hot.
So, if you get us the numbers, we'll confirm with the foundation that we can repurpose that.
And a secure location, so it's not stolen.
I'm assuming you want it out back at the sheriff's apartment somewhere, don't you?
Probably behind the 911 building.
Really?
Next to that building that we're going to have built out there.
There you go. Just ignore his chatter. It's okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Yes, sir. Okay, Gary, you're up.
Well, as we try and support law enforcement and fire and EMS-
Yes, we do.
And everyone else, as the commission is aware, you've targeted a north-end public safety complex driven by the growth and the movement of Company 40 from the, Eddie, you quoted this morning, I think, 1963?
Yes, sir.
And I see the fire board chair sitting here. We started down this path, actually, the fire board started down this path long before we got involved, and then the county commission in its foresight to create the North Tiff District and the South Tiff District, and Eddie gave a presentation this morning to the Chamber of Commerce and explained that part of the monies that can be used, or what some of the monies can be used for, is our items that support the Tiff District. So, what more supports the Tiff District than a public safety complex? So, you've identified funds for potential construction to either help or fully fund this building that went from a fire station for Company 40 to a public safety complex. You went out to bid for architectural and engineering services for said complex. You had a wonderful response, I think it was 13. Of those, they were narrowed down to five, and five firms were brought in and met with the same committee that's dealt with most of your, well, all of your construction projects, of which Eddie and I are both set on it. It was an almost immediate draw to the top five. One of the ones, both in presentation and in writing, had a phenomenal response. The MW, MW Architecture and Engineering, they're just north of Baltimore, MW Studios. I got to tell you, they've done 200-plus public safety complexes, and very impressive with their book of business and what they've done and how they've done it. Their presentation was just as impressive, in my opinion, and to that point, that's where the committee landed. So, what I did was, the committee tasked me to interface with them, and I did so, and And because there are so many moving parts to this, you have the fire board, you have the sheriff's department, you have the ambulance authority, you have yourselves. It'll be an early voting location. There's a whole lot of, we just don't know yet. So phase one, the very first phase, is, is the design and the programming of the complex. That value is one hundred fifty-seven thousand three hundred fifty dollars. Then they took and forecasted out all of the assumptions to the end to get us a bottom line price of a million thirty-six thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. What they have agreed to is a not to exceed the million oh thirty-six eight eighty, but to start with the one fifty-seven three fifty with the, the hopes that once the full scope is done, the, the total outlay for these are less. But nobody knows, but it's guaranteed not to exceed. So if the commission so chooses, we're asking you to approve and award the contract to MW Studios.
And, and they actually provide some services that we may not even need out of that proposed estimate that they gave us or the quote that they gave us. So there's a few things that we feel that we can actually deduct off of there as well.
And you're talking about, you know, a thirty thousand square foot complex on what is now a piece of property owned by the fire board. You know, there's some transition in property ownership that has to happen. But we're talking about a state of the art complex. So once you select these people, so then they'll interface directly with the fire board and the Company Forty leaders and come up with the needs and demands that are needed there. They'll interface directly with the sheriff and his team. They'll interface with the ambulance authority and their team, with us included, right? And you're going to end up with something that belongs to all the disciplines that truly supports the public on the north end. Where this is the first time in history that you've united all agencies and said, hey, look, let's all try and get together and do it in one spot. And it's most advantageous for the tax dollar, right? But you have the fire fee, you have the ambulance fee, you know, you have your general county monies to support the sheriff. And all of them duplicate services when you start building buildings, whether they're two miles apart or right across the block. So when you can share water, when you can share electric, all of the stuff, the heating and cooling, the end result is net savings to the citizens.
It sounds like they're the, obviously the most qualified, say at least.
In the opinion of the committee, and I'll let the president speak a little bit about that. It was impressive.
Well, I mean, they, they were multiple very qualified firms. There's no doubt about that. But when Gary had looked through them first and he says, I have, I have, well, I would see the top. He said, you look at it and I'm like, it, it didn't take very long to see that these people really came to the top very quickly.
This is their specialty, right? This is what they do.
That's what they do. And they do it very well, I believe, according to the references and stuff, so.
Yeah, just for clarification, the one million, one million thirty-six eight hundred and eighty, that is, what, what all will they provide for that?
That's a hundred percent. So that site, that's programming and design, that's construction documents, that's construction management, that's the bid process, that's all in. That's one hundred percent everything. Turnkey, from the beginning to the end.
Right.
So from, hey, fire board, hey, ambulance authority, hey, sheriff, hey, county commission, what do you need? Here's UNF.
Now, do we have an estimation on construction costs? And if you don't have that, that's okay. But what the actual building, what are we going to be all in on this?
Ten to thirteen million.
Ten to thirteen million.
And the.
And we have parameters stuck in, so not in, not anything derogatory towards the sheriff's department or the fire company, the Beddington Fire Hall, but, you know, oh, well, we want this, we want, you know, we've got parameters built in to what we are going to spend on.
That's phase one. The, the one hundred fifty-seven thousand three hundred fifty, that gets you a construction idea and, and plan.
Right.
That we, you, they think will go to bid and come to fruition under the budget you have.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And that's, and that's where we, we need to work with each agency and find out what their needs are and, and try to make it fit.
Right. We need to find out exactly what they need and, and not exactly what they want.
That's, that's how it all starts. That's part of the program. Everybody comes in with wants and then you work them down to needs and then you get to something. You have to be able to afford it, right? First and foremost. So, you know, short of the gold plated parking spot for Chief Burnett, I think it'll be a pretty good thing.
That's a given.
Right.
Well, fifteen, twenty years ago, the going rate on a multi-million dollar facility was ten percent for the architectural fees. And so that falls in line there in today's world.
Spot on.
To me is not overpriced at all. I don't think concerned about the whole thing is the acreage down there and the size of the lot and all of this.
When that's part of the design and they anticipate possibly, probably a multi-story building, right? Particularly for nine, the nine-one-one, the backup piece app and probably even maybe the sheriff's department. I mean, clearly the fire trucks and the ambulances can't function, not on the first floor. But that's part of what you're going to get for the one fifty-seven.
There's, there's no opportunity though at this point to purchase more land.
There is. There is.
I think we should investigate that.
There's one piece, the, the credit union split a parcel off, but I tell you, it's not going to be two hundred thousand acre.
It's very expensive.
And it's cost effective to build up. I mean, it's, it's, it's very cost effective to build up than to build out.
The, the beauty to it is, and to that parcel, the, the school board now has a road that goes out to School Drive from behind, what's the school next door?
Intermediate.
Intermediate. So now there's a great change down to the parcel that the fire board owns, but it would be really nice, the means egress, if you could come off of Brown Road and you could go out that way, you'd have opportunity, right? But even more so, Steve, to your point, if you could turn and go up the Baker parcel and come out on Route Nine, right beside the credit union. But again, that parcel's expensive.
Was there any potential in that Pepsi building?
No, it's gone. Okay. Need a, need a motion to accept MW Studios as our architectural and engineering firm.
I would move to accept that recommendation.
I'll second.
Properly moved and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you, sir. Do we have any need for executive session? We do not. Okay. Right. Okay.
Mr. President, I make the motion that we adopt the proclamation as today as the National Day of Prayer.
Second. Been moved and second. Any further discussion?
You get to read it, Mr. President.
I will. Whereas in nineteen fifty-two, the United States Congress passed a joint resolution signed by President Harry Truman, which established the annual National Day of Prayer. And whereas the law was amended in nineteen eighty-eight and signed by President Ronald Reagan, specifically designating the first Thursday in May as an official National Day of Prayer. And whereas President Bill Clinton supported this direction in his nineteen ninety-six National Day of Prayer proclamation when he stated, "We face many of the same challenges as our forbears, ensuring the survival of freedom, sustaining faith in a often hostile world. And we continue to pray, as they did, for the blessings of a just and benevolent God to guide our nation's course." "We should celebrate this day in the tradition of our founders, who believe that God governs in the affairs of men and women and who base their greatest hopes, dreams and aspirations in the surety of divine protection." "And whereas the new millennium affords us the opportunity to continue to live in a nation under God with liberty and justice for all, therefore be it resolved that the Berkeley County Commission beclaims, proclaims Thursday, May one, twenty twenty-five as a National Day of Prayer. And be it further resolved that our individual and collective efforts reflect the dreams we dare to have of a nation where divine protection will ever be present, adopted this first day of May, twenty twenty-five."
Thank you. Sir?
Need a motion and a second? We have.
We have a motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. That's going to end our day of business.
Going to an executive session?
No.
Do you mean we make a motion that's. Mr. President, a motion that we recess.
We are in recess.